7:00 PM, we're in regular session tonight. We have a full agenda and we also have a full audience, so welcome. Glad to see you here. Our first item of business is to establish a quorum. All council members are here. And Debbie Walker, our clerk of council, is not able to be with us tonight. And we do need to make a motion to appoint an acting clerk. And I believe Sarah Grace, Councilmember Grace, has agreed to serve as the acting clerk.
I would like to, President Nisley, if I may, I'd like to nominate Councilmember Grace this evening to be our acting clerk.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, that carries. We have a disposition of minutes for the regular session held on April 1st, 2019. A motion to approve would be...
So moved.
Okay, a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, approval of the minutes for April 1st, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Thank you. We have communications, a number of them tonight, one of which is that we have received a notice of a name change for the Red Brick, or a change of owners for the Red Brick Tavern. And this notice comes from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control out of the Department of Commerce, and just changing it to the Treglia Group Corporation. And that's for 14 North Court Street, first floor in the basement. Couple of other announcements about things going on around the city, one of which is the infrastructure tour, and that's when our Service Safety Director and Director of Public Works accompany council members around town talking about the history of it, and also infrastructure needs, and it's really informative. And it takes about two and a half hours. It's open to the public. Anybody that would like to come, all we ask is that you notify the clerk of council ahead of time that you'll be attending, so we have enough, we have a big enough bus, is what it is. And that's 12:30 on April 25th. The other thing that's happening this summer that is exciting amongst all the other things that are going on downtown is also the America in Bloom. And the city of Athens has participated in that for several years. And America in Bloom is an organization that promotes community enhancement programs through the use of flowers. So there will be, we've gone through the competition for two years and received an evaluation. This will be our third time. And their judges are here, and they walk through the city and evaluate the city on a number of criteria. So that'll be happening 25th of July this summer. Do we have any other communications from other council members? Yes, Councilmember Crowell?
I'd just like to announce that Ohio University on Thursday will be celebrating Earth Day, a bit early, Earth Day is the 22nd, but the university will celebrate on the 18th. And it will start, for the first time ever, with a parade. There will be a parade starting at McCracken Hall that will go through East Green and then up onto the main green, and then down the Court Street sidewalk, this will not be in the city streets, but on the sidewalk, through Baker Center, down to Bicentennial Park, where there will be many activities, free and open to the public, do-it-yourself projects, electric vehicle showcase, we'll have Tesla models and Nissan Leaf and electric motorcycles, electric skateboards, e-bikes. And there will also be the Re-Bike Program sale of salvaged bicycles at the university. So we welcome all community members to come on down and enjoy the Earth Day celebrations. Thank you.
What time is this, Senator?
Oh, thank you very much. The parade will start at 1 o'clock at McCracken Hall, and will proceed, arriving at the Walter Rotunda at approximately 1:30, 1:45. The reuse and repair fair and the other activities at the Walter Rotunda will begin at 1:30 and go till 4:30. The EV showcase itself is from 2:00 to 4:00. The Re-Bike Sale is from 2:30 to 4:30, and that is a first-come, first-served sale of bicycles. They're $40 each. Anyone can come and buy one bicycle per person. And as a first-come, first-served, these are as-is used bicycles, so there will be 40 bikes available, and the best bikes will go first. Thanks.
Other communications. Councilmember Kotzis.
President Nisley, thank you. I get to announce that the next Athens City School Board, regular board meeting will be happening this Thursday, actually the same day as Member Crowell's festivities on 4/18. This is at 6:30 PM at the Athens High School Auditorium, and I encourage people to attend. Thank you.
We did, I have one other communication, that council members did receive a brief note from Governor DeWine acknowledging the resolution that we passed a few weeks ago. This was Resolution R13, and it's the one that asserts our constitutionally protected right to self-government and home rule. So we did get at least a response thanking us for sending that on to him. We'll have communications from other elected officials. Law Director Eliasson, anything to report? Auditor Hecht?
No report.
Mayor Patterson?
I have a couple items to share with council. The first one is just a reminder about the Richland Avenue Bridge work that's going to be happening this summer, specifically happening May 6th through August 19th. Some other reminders associated with that project is that during construction, two-way traffic will be maintained, but there will be signalization down there because they'll be working on one side of the bridge, and then once it's completed, they'll start to work on the other side. With that in mind, there will also be one side of sidewalk that's closed during this project, too. So pedestrians, cyclists, and vehicles just know that that's going to be going on. The construction timeline, as I indicated, May 6th, contractors can be mobilizing on site May 1st. The temporary signal system will be installed on May 6th, and they're anticipating the west side of the project will have an expected completion date of late June, and then the other side will be completed by late August. So again, just a heads up on a much-needed bridge replacement, again, as council's aware, but for the viewers' sake, it's replacing a 1930s, mid-1930s, bridge that does currently have weight limits associated with it, so this is a much-needed replacement down that area. Another item to share with council, council's aware that I am one of the executives for the Mayor's Partnership for Progress, which is 15 Appalachian Counties. There's a much larger organization called the Ohio Mayor's Alliance. The Ohio Mayor's Alliance, the qualifier is you have to be a city with rather large populations. It's the 30 largest cities that are represented in the state of Ohio, and as you can imagine, southeast Ohio doesn't have any cities that are much larger than ours, 24,000. Mayor Lupfini and I lobbied the Mayor's Alliance, the Ohio Mayor's Alliance, to see if we could partner or be an affiliate. A couple weeks ago, they voted, their executive board voted, that the Mayor's Partnership should have a voting seat at the table representing southeastern Ohio. The Mayor's Partnership for Progress, our meeting last week, we met, and our only two business items were, one, to become a member of the Ohio Mayor's Alliance, and two, was to nominate the person who would be the seat, have that seat at the table. And I was fortunate to where the Mayor's Partnership for Progress voted me to be that person, so I'll be representing the southeast quadrant of the city in an organization, again, that had zero representation for municipalities of our size in southeastern Ohio. So I just wanted to share, council, that great news. The other thing I wanted to mention to council is that on April 24th, from 1:00 to 4:00 PM, I'll be up in Columbus at what's called the Opportunity Zone Showcase that Jobs Ohio is putting on, and I'll be sitting on a panel, talking about our opportunity zone. The interesting thing about this meeting is that there will be people who qualify to invest in areas, and so I'll be talking in particular about the Stimson Avenue project as a potential area for opportunity zone development for housing. I'm specific to housing, but there's also businesses in that area, so it'll be kind of a complete package that I put together. I'll have five minutes to speak with three other, or two other elected officials from two other municipalities in the state, and then there'll be a couple people, I think three other members, who will be livestreamed in. It'll be at COSI, which should be quite the treat to be presenting on the Jumbotron in COSI. So that's all I've got.
Okay, great. We'll move on to ordinances. The first set that we have are for a third reading, so that's the final reading, and we'll have a brief summary and see if there are any comments or questions, and then take the vote on approval or not. Ordinance 2419 is an ordinance closing certain streets in uptown Athens on Friday, June 21st, and Saturday, June 22nd, 2019, for the brick criterion. This is introduced by Councilmember Kotzis.
President Nisley, thank you. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 02419.
Second.
And this is a, this is a street closure that would happen on June, well, June 21st and June 22nd. On Friday, June 21st, the closure would include a section of East Union and College Street, and that is from 2:00 PM to 11:00 PM. Saturday, June 22nd, this is the original brick criterion course, which is two blocks of Court Street from Union to West State, West State up to Congress, two blocks of Congress to Union Street, and then Union back to Court Street. And that closure would be from 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM, with an extension to midnight for Union, Union Street only.
Okay. So we have a motion and second for approval. Do we have any other comments or questions from council members? Any comments or questions from the audience? I do believe, is Mr. Brown here? Did you have anything you wanted to add, or if you wanted to come up to the podium and just give us your name and address, and a brief comment if you'd like to? Mr. Brown's been the person that's been working on the committee to bring this back to the Athens community, he's spoken to us several times before.
Daniel Brown, 287 Carroll Road, Athens, Ohio. I just wanted to take a minute to thank all council members, President Nisley, Mayor Patterson, I appreciate your time and consideration, and that's all I have.
Thank you. All right. We'll move forward with the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 2519 is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 17 Taxes, Chapter 17.01, Municipal Income Tax, to include sections 7.18.80 through 7.18.95 of the Ohio Revised Code, and is introduced by all members of council. And is there somebody that, Jeff?
No.
Okay.
Sure, potatoes.
My move is that we adopt 2519, ordinance, under duress.
Second.
The "under duress" part is, this is being required by Ohio, the state legislature of Ohio, it is a clear imposition on our home rule ability to be able to collect our own taxes. And the state thinks that they can do it better, they can't. They've been told numerous times how it will hurt cities like Athens substantially in our ability to be able to pay for things that we provide as services for citizens, and that's why it's under duress. Thank you.
And this is the, this is the portion of the income tax that Tina Timberman presented information to us about, and we're moving forward with it. Okay, any other questions or comments? Mayor Patterson?
I just have a comment. As much as I really wish, Auditor Hecht, I could veto this particular piece of legislation once it's voted upon, I am the person who has to uphold the laws of the city, and therefore I will not be doing that, although I am not vetoing under duress.
All right. Yes, Auditor Hecht?
If we don't do this, we can't continue to collect our income tax. We're a statutory city, and so our rules follow for, to collect a local income tax are set by the state. And if anybody has it, it's kind of a long document, as you will see, it includes the old language and the new. If anybody has any questions, but penalties, things that will be included in as taxable income and things like that, penalties are all changed, and it's, it's pretty, pretty difficult, and it has, it takes, our income tax revenue takes a hit from this, so.
And I will note that we did receive a notice because the Ohio Tax Commissioner, Jeffrey McLean, from Ohio Department of Taxation, apparently saw the news articles when we first talked about this, and when Tina Timberman presented, and sent a note, sent a letter, in fact, to Athens City Council clarifying how the system works. But he does say that in some instances, and I think what he's referring to is the time delay, and sometimes when the income tax goes to, the business income tax goes to one municipality, might go to another, and then, and then we don't get revenue for several months. And he says that payment to cover their combined liabilities is adjusted each year. The state system distributes the money as directed by the taxpayer to the appropriate municipalities. In some instances, a taxpayer may estimate high in one city, low in another, and need to adjust that in subsequent quarters. As the year goes by, the actual amount of tax owed becomes clearer, but ultimately with filing extensions, and it can take up to 18 months for the true tax liability to be determined. So clearly, I mean, we are complying, but it's taking, it's going to take a long time. Oh, Auditor Hecht, once again, yes.
Can I go in on that?
Yes, you may.
They are making those adjustments quarterly. Tina and I went to the state for Meet Your Representative Day, and we talked to our local representatives and a couple other ones, and it, they're making adjustments quarterly, and usually for a business, your reconciliation is done annually. They put one city up near Columbus in a deficit of $400,000. 18 months for us to be in the hole because they've sent money someplace else, and then we'll eventually get it back is really a hardship. And it's not an appropriate way for them to collect and redistribute our money, but we're fighting for that. I will say that this is a new tax commissioner who just came in early this year, and so I don't know if he truly understands all of this stuff. This has been going on for about seven years now, the centralized collection, and so we're still fighting. Part of the problem is some of the language in the, you know, legislation isn't clear or it's contradictory, and they don't always quite understand our processes when they write these bills. So we're, we're still working on it, but in the meantime, that's, that's a hardship, the way they're distributing the taxes and redistributing to the different localities. And they also are planning to, if we don't have enough of credit, to take money from other places. So we'll see how that works out, but, you know, the other places don't really have anything to do with our tax department, and of course, you know, I don't know how we'll account for it if they start taking from other funds, and...
Councilmember McGee, do you have a question?
I do. I just wanted to clarify something to make sure that I'm right on this. This only affects business taxes, is that correct? And that the citizens of Athens will still be paying their income taxes, their individual income taxes, to the city of Athens rather than the state? Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Business, okay. So we have a motion, second comments we've received, and we are doing this under the recommendation of our income tax administrative, administrator for the city to go ahead and pass this, so we're in compliance. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. We now have a series of second readings, and those are the ones in which I read the title. I will ask briefly if there are comments or questions, but it's mainly reading it for the second time. One of these, 2919, we will be suspending tonight, otherwise we'll pretty much just be reading the titles. Ordinance 2619 is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into a five-year contract to purchase body worn cameras and tasers for the Athens Police Department. It's introduced by Councilmember Butler. Ordinance 2719 is, yes, did you have a comment or question? Yes, did you have a question?
I have a comment.
If you have a comment, if you'd like to come up to the podium, you'll need to give us your name and address, and if you're, and also identify for us if you're representing a group.
Okay. So, good evening, thanks for that opportunity to speak. My name is Ellie Hamrick. I'm a member of the Athens Revolutionary Socialist. I live on the south side of town, and I'm running for an at-large seat on Athens City Council. So I want to applaud the purchase of body cameras as a step toward accountability, but I also want to caution that we should not assume that the problem of police violence is now solved in Athens. In fact, studies have shown that body cameras have no effect on police behavior or accountability, and police killings of black, native, and all working-class people have continued unabated throughout the country, even as over 90% of departments now use body cameras. In Columbus this past December, the CPD entrapped 16-year-old Julius Tate, beat him and murdered him. They're now charging his 16-year-old girlfriend, Masneek Saunders, with his murder, simply because she was present when they killed him. We cannot assume, just because we live in a smaller city, that police brutality is not and never will be a problem here. In fact, Athens is the poorest and most unequal county in Ohio, and the link between poverty and police brutality is well-established. Black people comprise 4% of the population of Athens, but account for 8.43% of arrests. The evidence all shows that policing does not keep us safer. Instead, policing makes life less safe for working-class people, particularly black and native people, all people of color, people with disabilities, and LGBTQ people. Body cameras might be a step in the right direction, but the only truly meaningful reforms are to defund, disarm, and demilitarize the police. The APD should be banned from accepting surplus military supplies from Bill Clinton's notorious 1033 program. Funding should be directed away from policing and toward meeting people's pressing everyday needs at every opportunity. I also think the city council should pass a resolution condemning the CPD's murder of Julius Tate and demanding freedom for Masneek Saunders. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Okay. And any other questions or comments? We'll move on to ordinance 2719, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit an application and enter into an agreement with the Ohio Developmental Development Services Agency for a Community Development Block Grant Program. This is the CDBG Program, Critical Infrastructure Grant Program, for program year 2019, introduced by Councilmember Butler. Any comments or questions? Ordinance 2819 is an ordinance amending ordinance 2318, authorizing design engineering of the Stimson Avenue Improvements Project Number 315, introduced by Councilmember McGee. Ordinance 29, oh, any comments or questions before I move on? Thank you. Ordinance 2919 is an ordinance authorizing participation in the Ohio Department of Transportation Cooperative Purchasing Program and declaring an emergency. This is introduced by Councilmember Kotzis.
President Nisley, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules for ordinance 02919.
Second.
And the reason for this is that ODOT has given us a short turnaround time. The application is due on Friday.
Okay. We have a motion and second for suspending the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Rules have been suspended, Councilmember Kotzis.
President Nisley, I would like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 02919.
Second.
And, and this is, you know, this is one of those, the title says it all, ODOT basically has set up a larger purchasing group for winter road salt, so if we participate in this, this will allow us to, to save some money in the purchase price of road salt in our 2019 budget.
Okay. We have a motion and second for approval of ordinance 2919. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 3019 is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into an LPA, State Project Agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation, for a bridge-deck overlay project within the corporation boundary on U.S. State Route 33, and declaring an emergency. This is introduced by Councilmember Kotzis. Any questions or comments? Ordinance 3119 is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit an application and enter into an agreement with ODOT, the Ohio Department of Transportation, for a transportation alternatives program grant for an Athens uptown area improvements project and declaring an emergency. It's introduced by Councilmember Kotzis. Any comments or questions? Ordinance 3219 is an ordinance authorizing 2019 street paving and repairs, introduced by Councilmember Kotzis. Yes, Councilmember Kotzis.
Yes, and so last week, I did, I did receive through another council member a request for the, for the list, and so I guess, you know, the list of streets, which I, which I understand that Engineer Hedy is still, still working on. I guess my question is, as we, as we move this through the, through the reads, and we haven't, and we don't have a list of streets, is it, do, is there a way that we can get the list of streets here sooner than later, so that we can definitely get it out to the citizens that are requesting it?
Absolutely. I'll press to have him get those to you, hopefully, you know, tomorrow, the next day.
Okay. Be great.
Yep.
Great, thank you. Ordinance 3319 is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into contracts for interior enhancements to the municipal parking facility, Project Number 326, introduced by Councilmember Kotzis. Any comments or questions? Ordinance 3419 is an ordinance closing a portion of Court Street on Friday, June 7th, August 9th, and September 20th, 2019, for a cruise inn, and that's introduced by Councilmember Kotzis. Any questions or comments? Ordinance 3519 is an ordinance closing a portion of Union Street between Court and Congress on Saturday, August 17th, 2019, from 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM, for an uptown art event, introduced by Councilmember Kotzis. Comments or questions? 3619 is an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code, Section 13.04.10, Unnecessary Noise on Union Street and Contiguous Property to Union Street, on August 17th, 2019, for an uptown art event, introduced by Councilmember Kotzis. Questions or comments? 3719, an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code, Chapter 11.04, Vending, Peddling, and Soliciting to Allow Vending in a Designated Area on Saturday, August 17th, 2019, during uptown, an uptown art event, introduced by Councilmember Kotzis. I'll assume no comments or questions. 3819 is an ordinance declaring property located at 7055 Blackburn Road no longer needed for a municipal purpose, and authorizing the mayor to sell said property to another political subdivision, and this is introduced by Councilmember Reisner. Comments or questions? 3919 is an ordinance declaring property located at 7065 Blackburn Road no longer needed for a municipal purpose, and authoring, authorizing permission to donate the property to another political subdivision. That's introduced by Councilmember Reisner. Any comments or questions? We move on now to ordinances for a first reading. Ordinance 4019 is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit an application and execute an agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for transportation improvement district funding, introduced by Councilmember McGee.
Yes, this, this ordinance would authorize the mayor to seek money through the TID, the Transportation Improvement District, for the Stimson Avenue project, primarily the city is basically seeking any kinds of funding that it can obtain through other sources, and this would be the, one of the first steps to authorize the, the city to obtain that from the Ohio Department of Transportation. So, so the mayor pursuant to this ordinance would have that right to enter into an agreement for the obtaining of this. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Ordinance 4119 is an ordinance establishing a complete street policy for the city of Athens, introduced, and is introduced by Councilmember Kotzis.
President Nisley, thank you. And this was discussed some time ago at a committee meeting, and at the time, we were, at that point, I felt like we were working towards a resolution, but after some further discussions, we, this, this is now coming forward, forward as an ordinance, and so complete streets... And so, complete streets, of course, the, the idea of designing our systems, our roadways, to, to benefit the largest population that we can, you know, the rule of thumb is from ages eight to 80, and that, that you don't need to have a, necessarily need to have a vehicle in order to interact with the, a personal vehicle to interact with, with the streets. And so, you know, I think it's all on your drive. I do want to mention a couple of the, the whereas on the first page, and then I will work quickly through the next four pages. The, the city of Athens encourages transportation systems which provide the best possible service, mobility, and safety while reinforcing positive social, economic, and environmental influences. And the city of Athens and its Engineering and Public Works Department has been an active transportation leader in the region. And establishing a complete streets policy helps guide those tasks with the design implementation and improving multimodal transportation needs in our community. Be it ordained by the Council of the City of Athens, Ohio, that Athens City Council hereby approves a complete streets policy for the city of Athens. And so, and that is all then leads into Exhibit A, where we describe the, the vision and intent of, of such a policy. And it's to develop safe, reliable, efficient, integrated, and connected transportation systems that are multimodal, and promote access, mobility, and healthy behavior for all users. And the users are defined by, by, they are, but not limited to pedestrians, bicyclists, transit riders, people of all ages, abilities, motorists, commercial traffic, and connected autonomous vehicles. And looking at projects and phases, this would be, this would be a, a system that would be looked at with, with, at all levels of the, of planning, programming, design, construction, construction engineering. We even have right-of-way acquisition in there, although that would be a worst-case scenario. Operation and maintenance, reconstruction, and other changes to transportation facility on streets and right-of-way. There are a list of exceptions, and those would be determined by the Safety Service Director. And this is, you know, a couple examples. An impacted roadway does not allow you to, to run a complete streets system on it. A good example would be U.S. 33, where we're not going to be putting a sidewalk. The costs of providing accommodations are excessively disproportionate to the need or use in the area. Existing and planned population, employment densities, traffic volumes, or level of transit service around a particular roadway is so low that there isn't, there's no need to, to add additional features or elements. And so, and it, once again, we go, move forward, talking into, about the, the whole system, the connectivity, the network of the, of our, of our area. So, your right-of-ways basically are, are your connections from, from your door to your workplace, to all of your services, to business. And so, it's something that, that you have to look at in a holistic manner. And there is a list of design elements. These are basically listed in the, in the ordinance are different guides that we can look to, that are, that are national-level organizations that are, that are designing systems, in-street systems. So, you know, state Departments of Transportations, ASHTO, which is the American Association of State Highway Officials, PROWAG, the Public Right-of-Way Accessibility Guidelines, NACTO, the National Association of City Transportation Officials. And so, those are just a few, but the, we tried to cover as many, as many of them so that we can look to them for guidance as we're designing those, our systems as we move forward. Context and sensitivity, this speaks to the idea that you have to look beyond the street and also look at what, what is connected directly to that street. So, you know, if, is there, are there historical elements that you need to take into consideration as you're designing a street through an area? Could be a, could be a, you know, a sensitivity that you want to pay attention to. The last, the last, the last mention in this ordinance is performance measures, and there is a list of performance measures of which we would then be looking at on an annual basis in a, in a report-type format, is what we were discussing with Engineer Robert Hetty, so that we can kind of track and see how, how we are, are performing with, with a complete streets policy. I want to make a mention that I did go online and check and see, and I believe that there are only two, to, to my research, there are only two municipalities that have a complete streets ordinance in the state of Ohio, and that's the city of Dayton, and, and also Pickwa, Ohio, also has one currently on the books. So, this is something that is, it isn't new, you know, in the design. I think this is something that, that Andy Stone has been, been looking at and developing since he came into, into his office as, as Director of Public Works back in 2004. But the, I think that a lot, a lot of cities are not, not codifying this, and I think that what this is able to do is, is to tell, to basically say, this is what we have been doing, and it'll, and it gives us the ability that if the administration ever, well, when, when it does change, we, we don't know if they will, you know, because it will, right? I'm not, I'm not, I'm not making any, any assumptions here, but the, that the next, next administration understands that this is, this is a part of what Athens has, has believed in already for 15 years.
Great. Thank you for that introduction. Do we have comments or questions? Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Nisley. I wanted to go backwards a little bit and, and give the public a little bit of a background to where the complete streets policy really started becoming legislation. The Athens City County Health Department, Megan Buskirk sort of got the ball rolling, I believe, in terms of getting an ad hoc group together to start to look at policies and, and begin to write a draft form for the city of Athens. This Athens City Planner, Paul Logue, in creating the visioning documents for Athens and the comprehensive plan, went out and asked community members for their input and had online comments, and I have a, a complete summary of the online comments that were submitted as part of that process. And whether they know it or not, complete streets is just everywhere in this document. You know, under transportation and accessibility, less congestion. I would like to see a move from cars to bikes in public transportation. Less vehicles centered with a focus on accessibility by walkability, mass transit, accessible, a commuter-friendly city without combustion cars. Expanded, integrated transportation, bicycle and pedestrian-friendly, vehicle flow, disability-friendly. It goes on and on. Walkability, add sidewalks where needed, more bike lanes, walker and biker-friendly, inclusive modes of transportation. It's just that, in, in all different sort of categories in this comment from the public, we can see this, the, the desire for this complete streets policy. So, I'm very much behind it. And I was involved in the initial drafting of the policies, and I was able, at the invitation of the city, to attend, attend a complete streets training that was put on by the National Complete Streets Coalition just this February. So, throughout sort of 2018, we were looking at drafting a policy, and then the comprehensive plan process was going on and getting comments from citizens. Then some of us were able to attend the complete streets training this, early this year. And the National Complete Streets Coalition lays out 10 elements of a, of a comprehensive complete streets policy. And I want to commend the city administration and Member Kotzis for, for drafting and, and ordinance that encompasses almost the complete recommended components of a, of a complete streets policy. One piece I want to bring up is that, under that piece of exceptions, and I want to repeat what, what Member Kotzis said about the current administration, I think we can look at the, some of the infrastructure improvements we've seen to the city over the past several years, in particular, where we can see these complete streets policies, even without a policy existing, really happening. We see improved sidewalks, we see the addition of sidewalks, we see a lot of curb cuts to improve accessibility. We see the changes to Union Street, East State Street, Richland Avenue, and the upcoming project on Stimson Avenue. I think that the city is looking at making the city of Athens accessible for all users, and I really applaud that. However, to echo comments by Member Kotzis, this policy puts a lot in the hands of the, of the Service Safety Director. And as I said, and as, as Member Kotzis stated, Mr. Stone has been thinking about this for a long time, and one of the reasons why we see a lot of current projects really take on these elements is because of his leadership. But how long will the current administration be here? How long will all of council be here? So, we need to try to legislate, obviously, for as far into the future as we can. And the exceptions piece of this policy does say that exceptions will be determined by the Service Safety Director, period. So, the, the advice by the National Coalition, the Complete Streets, National Complete Streets Coalition, is that the, any policy makes any exceptions specific and sets a clear procedure that requires high-level approval of exceptions. That seems to make a lot of sense to me. We have high-level approval, it's going right to the Service Safety Director, that, that's the top of the agency responsible for our projects. But then in the details about exceptions, it does say, "In addition to defining exceptions, there must be a clear process for granting them, where a senior-level department head must approve them. Any exceptions should be kept on record and publicly available." Now, that helps people understand, obviously, why exceptions were made in one case versus another. And I have no doubt that, that Mr. Stone will, or, or Mr. Hetty together, will make decisions that are based on, on the best for the community. But again, going forward, I don't know who will be in those roles and how they will make the decision based on exceptions. So, that is my only point of, of possible revision, or, or I would like to hear more from Mr. Stone, if, if possible, about that piece of how we're going to know what has been accepted and why. So, perhaps something could be added to that annual report that lays out the exceptions and gives a clear understanding of why something was excluded. Yes?
Other?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, comments or questions?
Yes.
I, I would first like to applaud the city on what we've done with transportation in the past few years, the fact that Ohio University students, for instance, are using our bus system more and more. I, I think is a real indication that public transportation is viable in the city of Athens. I applaud Councilmember Kotzis on all the hard work he's done for the bicycle groups in town. I, I think this is really a fascinating growth in, of use. I am concerned when we talk about congestion of the streets, though. I notice that congestion is at various times, and sometimes for various reasons, somebody may have double parked, there may be an accident on Court Street. I notice often, quite often, since I'm on Court Street, quite a bit in my office currently overlooks Union and Court, you can see when the congestion is occurring. And I'm, I'm not quite sure that, you know, the downtown part of Court Street can be just dealt with in, in the way perhaps that it's being suggested. So, I'm not being critical of this, but I'm just, I'm just saying, I urge caution when we're dealing with Court Street itself, because it's, I think it's, it is complex. I would suggest that, as far as, one of my primary concerns is the local businesses. I don't want them hurt by eliminating parking, for instance, that they need to survive. A classic example is Little Professor. I, I know that often they're in the situation that they cannot get people to just stop by quickly and, and obtain their purchases. So, so that's something I'm concerned with, the local merchants, how, how some of these policies might affect them. But overall, again, I would applaud and congratulate the, the administration and council for doing what they're doing on this issue, and it's an important issue. So, thanks.
Member Grace.
Thank you. I just want to comment on, on Member Crowell's comments and suggestions that, in terms of exceptions, I, I think it's really valuable to the public and, and to the future communities and community leaders and administration for there to be a, a record documentation of, of why exceptions to, to the complete street plan would be made. And so, I, I would also like to see that in, in the ordinance, that, that there is a specific plan for the process of exceptions and, and a, a record of, of why the exceptions are made. So, thank you for bringing that up.
Yes, Member Fall.
Thank you. I know that this has been kind of floating around for a while, as first a resolution and now an ordinance. And I think it would be good, because I, you know, several of us went to the complete streets training and such, of being able to review it even more, given what has been said this evening, to look at it, to make sure that, that it's the most up-to-date, best management practices within it. And I think that the exceptions coming out as an example would make sense for us to be able to look at it closely. I know that we have three readings, but that's something that I know other people in, in the city, several people have asked me about it, to make sure that it's the most up-to-date sort of, of ordinance that we can pass. So, thank you.
Mayor, thank you.
To go back to Councilmember Crowell's comments, I, I agree with you. I think that, that, you know, if you look at, if you look at other boards or commissions, you know, in the city of Athens, and in particular those that are dealing with, with various issues, such as Board of Zoning Appeals, you know, potentially the Housing Appeal Board, things of that nature, I, you know, that there's a reason why those, those minutes are archived, and it again, is to, to look at a level of fairness across the playing field. And so, I really appreciate your comment. We can certainly do this, to where we have a living document that moves forward for any of the exemptions that, that do come forward, so that we are being fair. So, we will certainly look into that and, and see, you know, the language that you just read a minute ago is something that we can likely just insert. And then that could go out as well in the annual report. That would be not that difficult to do, I don't think. I'm assuming that you would, well, we can probably get that annual report out within the first couple of months of the new year, so we'll treat it as a calendar year as we move forward.
Great, thank you. Do we have anybody in the audience?
Let us know your name and address, and if you represent a group, and you'll have three minutes.
Hello, I'm Rob Delak, 124 Morris Avenue, not specifically representing any groups at the moment. I'd like to commend the city on, on working on a complete streets policy. I was also involved in original drafting on the ad hoc committee, and it was one of those first things I was involved with when I got to Athens, so it was nice to be included in something like that right away when I was new to the city. I do also agree that we need a little more reporting, I think, in this, in this policy. So, I think that's the missing piece. Otherwise, we check all the boxes, like Member Crowell said, of the 10 essential items. We have nine of them. One of them is a little weak, which is the one we're talking about. The 10th one, I think, is not critical implementation, so I don't think that's important. But the exemptions and exceptions to the rule, and documenting those and reporting on those, I think is the right approach, and I'd like to see that added to the, to this legislation. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. I think we've got it. Thank you. We move on. We'll move on to ordinance 4219, an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Athens to enter into an agreement for the establishment of the Outdoor Recreation Council of Appalachia, Council of Governments, introduced by all members of council. And I can offer some brief background information that we did discuss this last week and heard from Don McCarthy and Danny Twilley, who I believe are also here again tonight, and who have been involved with the planning of it. I believe Jason Reed from the Wayne National Forest is also joining us tonight. Council members received a copy of the proposed draft for the Council of Governments and the bylaws. And then this week, in addition to that, council members and the mayor have received frequently asked questions that was prepared by the group working with the Wayne National about the Council of Governments, general questions answered, and then also about the Bailey's Trail system, for which this recreation, this Council of Governments, is being formed. Yes, councilmember Fall.
If this is not specifically it was told last week that this is not specifically for the Bailey's Trail and that it's a general Appalachian Recreation Council of Governments? Is that true or not? I mean, is this specifically that it will look at other recreational opportunities that deal with Appalachia experience?
I think it's not restricted to Bailey's. I think that Bailey's is the circumstances under which this comes forward.
Right. Because, you know, there's been a lot of talk about doing, you know, a park district, doing other sort of departments at a county level to look at and coordinating all the different things that are happening between nonprofits, city, county, you know, state coming in and doing granting around this area of outdoor recreation, you know, kind of non-motorized activity. And I would hate to see it turn into Bailey-specific, because I think that it's going to be a lot more advantageous to look at it at a larger scale, including more people, if it evolves after Bailey's. So I don't want it to just be because it's kind of, it would become like the 900-pound gorilla, and all the other stuff that's going on would just be, would be subdued. That's mine.
Mayor Patterson.
I agree with what you're saying, member Fall. You know, let me share with you, you know, there's two COGS that I'm very familiar with, one of them being Southeast Ohio Public Energy Council and another one being Northeast Ohio Public Energy Council. And those Council of Governments can grow. They can grow as new members come on, you know. SOPAC is probably the best example. As SOPAC has grown, and there are people who get valid initiatives to go on to enter into an aggregation through whomever, but often SOPAC, that those COGS can grow. And so, to your point, I think one of the things that was mentioned is, you know, the possibility of river trails, having a river trail system. And so therefore, it would go well beyond what you currently see in this initial COG. But, you know, another example could possibly be, I know that there was, there's a lot of interest in creating on a rock formation, a climbing area, rock climbing area, you know, further out in the county itself. And so, again, that could be drawn in or brought in. I don't believe that they're restricted to counties either, necessarily. You know, depending on the recreational activities as they grow in our region, that there is the opportunity for this particular COG to grow beyond the county borders.
And in fact, it's in its title of Appalachia, so, yeah. Other questions or comments? Any questions or comments from the audience? All right. It's been read for the first time. Thank you. 4319 is an ordinance amending the 2019 appropriation ordinance and is introduced by councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. The title pretty much says everything there is to say about it, but I'll read the pertinent sections here for the first time. The 2019 Appropriation Ordinance 14018 is hereby amended by appropriating from the unappropriated balance excuse me, the following sums. $3,500 to General Fund Lands and Buildings 101-112, transaction code 500 to replace a failed ventilation system. $12,000 to Law Building Approvements Fund 585, transaction code 500 to replace the video surveillance system at the police department, and $6,000 to Athens City Enhancement Fund 250, transaction code 300, for the Personnel Plus Uptown Contract and Poet Laureate, and increase in the total appropriations by set amounts. Section 2, the auditor is hereby authorized to make the following inter-fund transfer from Parking Garage Fund 730 to Parking Garage Debt Fund 733, the amount of $159,000.
Yes, councilmember Crowell.
Where is the failed ventilation system?
The failed ventilation system is one of the restrooms, or it could possibly be both restrooms up there outside the auditor's office and the law director's office. There's two restrooms there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments or questions? All right. Ordinance 4419 is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 11 Business Regulations to include Chapter 11.12, Shared Active Transportation. This is introduced by councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. This ordinance is a little longer, so I'll try to be brief about it. What we're doing here is amending our our Chapter 11 of our Business Regulations title under our city ordinances to take in account various changes that are happening in the micro-mobility industry. Vendors and other companies are going to owe other cities and placing within the public right-of-ways what's called shared vehicles, small electric devices that will transport people for a fee. Under Ohio Revised Code, these vendors have the right to use our public rights-of-way to do business. But it falls upon the individual cities to come up with forms of regulation to make sure that our sidewalks and other public spaces don't become crowded and, you know, hostile to ordinary pedestrian traffic. So on our hard drives, you'll see about nine pages of additions to Title 11, Chapter 12. And you can read this, I'm not going to go through all of it, but I highly urge you all to please read this code. This, what's coming out here, the change into the title, is that we are changing our city ordinances. And this will become legal language to govern these vehicles when they appear. And this is our opportunity to get this right. So I urge everyone on council, and if there's any discussion or suggestions that would be brought up immediately, so we can get this thing done. And I would suggest the same thing for the next ordinance that comes hand-in-hand with it.
Any comments or questions? Yes, councilmember Crowell.
I just want to point out that this ordinance, this issue is one where we've seen a lot of cooperation between the university and the city. The university is concurrently working on its own policy so that the city's and the university's policies don't contradict one another. In the city of Athens, that would be very difficult if we had we're talking about e-scooters here, for anyone who doesn't know. We're talking about e-scooters and as well as bike share and e-bicycles. But we need to make policies that work for both the town and the gown. These companies will be coming here for the university population much more than for the local population. So they really want it to work on campus as well as in the city. But for those that don't know, there are ways that these companies can geo-fence areas, and they are no-ride zones. So the devices will automatically either decrease in acceleration or completely turn off when they enter a zone. So this will probably be the case at Ohio University on the main green, depending on what the city, how this goes through. There's an area here in the ordinance called geo-fencing. The areas of the city that would be geo-fenced, the streets that would be geo-fenced. It's also, we also have the ability to require companies to turn off these devices at a certain time of the evening and turn them back on at a certain time in the morning. That way, we don't have any members of our community zipping around very late at night, perhaps, after having had a good time out. So I do recommend that the entire council take a close look at this. And something that I know that the city, Mr. Logue and Mr. Stone and the city administration have worked very hard to get this right. But it's a difficult, it's a new thing. So there's a section here on fleet size requirements. Some of you may know, if you pay attention to these issues in the rest of the United States, some companies have just come to large cities and put down a couple thousand of these and said, okay, now deal with it. And this administration wanted to get ahead of that, as well as Ohio University wanted to get ahead of that situation and not have to be retroactively dealing with the situation that was just plopped in our lap. And I commend them for being ahead of this. But there's still some things to figure out. How many of these devices do we really want to see come very quickly to the city while still being open to the different vendors that have these? And that's a complicated sort of formula. And Mr. Logue worked pretty hard to try to get this right, but it needs a lot of eyes. So I would appreciate, and we all would appreciate feedback from the community and certainly from council. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Mayor Patterson, did you have?
I think I've mentioned this to council, that I was in New York at a conference, an International Town Gown Association Regional Conference in Ithaca, New York. And I was speaking about this in particular. And it's interesting that we're not alone trying to get this right with a level of ordinance to where there's guidance. When someone is interested in deploying these, they know that they can go to something and look to see what are the guidelines for that city. Because as member Crowell was saying, you know, currently, there's a lot of cities that don't. And a lot of these companies are coming in. I think the companies are more savvy now than to just come in and deploy hundreds or thousands of these things and walk away because of the blowback that they have received and some of the issues surrounding these. I'm glad that you mentioned the geo-fencing. The other thing that we are really looking at with all the companies we get calls from companies all the time and want us at least sit down and talk with administration about what, how we're viewing these types of this mode of transportation. Another thing that can be done is that you can basically have these to where they're kind of geo-throttled, to where in certain areas, they will slow down to, say, six miles an hour as opposed to being able to operate at 15 miles an hour. You know, all the companies that we've spoken to, as of yet, who, again, were interested, and they reached out to us. I haven't reached out to anybody. But those who have reached out to us, you know, one of the things I make very clear is areas that we are considering geo-fencing, Court Street being one of them, because with us having a no-wheels sidewalks in the uptown area, on Court Street in particular, and some of these companies not having the ability to geo-fence something that narrow, you know, an 11-foot-wide strip that can be three, four blocks long, it's almost easier for the city to require that that particular stretch of street to include those sidewalks is geo-fenced off, to where these won't operate in there. For anyone who's watching, so that they know, these don't just come to a screeching halt when you drive into or ride into a no-ride zone. They gradually slow down and come to a stop. And then therefore, that person has to walk it through that zone to the other side and continue on. So one of the things that, again, I'm very clear with any of these companies is, one, we've got some significant terrain in the city of Athens to where these may not be operable. Jeff Hill becomes one that comes to mind for me right away, as well as Madison and some other rather steep hills. And in particular, with these e-scooters. Two, we have brick streets. And how are these going to operate on some of our brick streets? And again, in particular, we have the majority of those in the uptown area. And three, our density. You know, we've got a large student body and a large historic commerce area, that being Court Street and its environment. So they're very, you know, I am pretty thorough with what I tell them about what we have going on. I'm very thorough about areas that we currently deem as being no-ride zones. So it's interesting.
Thank you. All right. No other comments? We'll move on to 4519, the corollary that councilmember Reisner referred to. An ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 1, General Provisions, Chapter 1.03, Code Fees Established to Include Fees Associated with Shared Active Transportation, introduced by councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. Allow me to read the pertinent sections here. Section 1, An Ordinance Amending Athens City Code Title 1, General Provisions, Chapter 1.03, Code Fees Established to Add the Following to Title 11. Section 11.12.03, Permit Required, Permit Terms and Fees. Application Fee: $150 plus $10 per fleet vehicle. Permit Fee: $10,000 plus $10 per vehicle. Permit Renewal Fee: $2,500 plus $10 per vehicle. Public Infrastructure and Property Maintenance Fee: $40 per small vehicle per year, based on the maximum fleet size requested and approved. Free operators are exempt from all fees, but must apply and secure a permit. Thank you.
Thanks. All right. Any other, yes, councilmember Kotzis.
Yes, and this is just a general question to administration, because I know that when there's an issue with these machines, the company's probably not necessarily going to be the first one contacted if this is laying in the middle of, say, Smith Street. Will some of this, I mean, do we believe that some of this will be able to offset the additional work that the city's going to end up encountering? Because EPW might have to go out and throw one of these in the back of the truck and take it somewhere and hold it until somebody comes along and gets it.
Or the code office, or the police department.
Yes, yeah.
The fire department will just drive right over them.
Wouldn't that be like a car? And you have a towing service who gets those out of the way? It's like an abandoned vehicle, you know? I mean, I would hate to have us running around getting scooters that we think are in trouble, but they're really not in trouble, and somebody comes out, oh my goodness, my scooter. That's not the, we contract out that sort of headache.
But there's no VIN that's attached to a person when you talk about this vehicle, as opposed to an automobile?
So if, who will be charged when that is a very good idea? Maybe it needs to be looked at where abandoned vehicles, abandoned scooters and such, will be the responsibility of the company in that we will not pick them up. I mean, we will pick them up. They have to, like, get them out of jail with them. So I think this is an area that we need to look at.
I encourage you to read through this ordinance, because this ordinance, it spells out a lot of what is being mentioned right now. The onus is going to be put on the owners of, you know, the company that has these scooters to include, you know, impacts that they would incur, you know, a level of, you know, impact. We'll impound some of these things if we have to. If we find them lying all over the place, we have the right to impound them. And I believe we have language to where we could charge for these being impounded as well. You know, there's again, I encourage council and anyone who's here tonight to look at this. Again, I encourage council and anyone who's here tonight to look at this piece of legislation very carefully.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. Councilmember McGee.
Thank you. I was just wondering what the $10,000 fee was based on, why that figure came up? I mean, it seems high to me.
There's municipalities that do allow for the operation of these, and there's a whole sundry of different ways in which there are fees levied on these companies. Some of it is, you know, miles ridden per vehicle, others just a flat rate, and this is somewhere in the middle of what we come up with for a fee. You know, if it's $10,000 for an application, you know, and for 100 vehicles, these companies are still making money off of the rides. You know, there's also a requirement in this ordinance legislation, because, kind of off topic, just a tad, off your question, and that is that, you know, these vehicles, they have to demonstrate that they're being ridden at least three times a day, otherwise, they're going to have to scale down in terms of the number of scooters they have. But anyway, back to your question, I think that this is something that council, or City Planner Paul Logue, came up with as kind of the middle-of-the-road fee structure for what exists out there today with other municipalities that have fee structures for the scooters.
Thank you. Councilmember Katsas.
Yes, I could just add a comment to, you know, when I look at the, this is a commercial operation, and they are, they are not renting a space within the, within our city, so we're not necessarily collecting any other taxes on them. But what they do is they just set up an outright of way. And I think, well, let's say you wanted to do a law office, and it was going to cost $1,500 a month to rent a space, or you could pay $10,000 and just do it right there on the street. I mean, you know, it's, I think overall, I think the rental of that public right-of-way, which is for everyone, it's not, that's not, it's not a, and plus, that's the initial year, it goes down to 2,500 every year after that, so.
Okay. Councilmember Crowell.
Councilmember McGee, as I mentioned to you on Court Street last week, I appreciate your fiscal responsibility. I want you to understand that this is money that's coming into the city.
Oh, I understand. It's coming out of the pockets of all of the people, too.
I just wanted to.
Right.
Okay. Just want to make sure yours.
If I could respond to that, because I truly am concerned about this, where we have this, one minute we're saying we want complete streets, and we want more access to bicycles and less car, and then we have companies that are intending to come to town and to perhaps solve some of those problems, and we're imposing what I consider a rather high fee. I mean, if we're charging vendors 60 bucks or 80 bucks for parking spaces, how can we justify charging people $10,000 to, you know, have a few storage places for their bikes? And ultimately, it comes out of the people who are going to be using those bikes. You know, the charges are going to be passed on, and I'm concerned about that, whether the city actually has any basis whatsoever for this kind of fee, because it's a high fee. Now, you know, maybe if we're supplying something separately, fine, but if we're just kind of imposing something to also make sure that only big businesses can even do this, then we should be aware and we should be honest in what we're doing here.
Okay, we're going to have about two or three more comments, and then if we need further discussion and to gather additional information from City Planner Logue, I think we'll do that.
Sure.
Because we're not in committee tonight. Okay. So why don't we do Councilmember Crowell, and then you have a comment.
Just, surely, I just recommend that you look into the business model that's been out there. Initially, I think that there are some getting a dollar a day, I mean, that was the initial, a dollar a day per scooter, you know, it was looking in the hundreds of thousands of dollars that cities were making a year. I think that Mayor Patterson is right, is that this is not terribly high and it's not terribly low. But I do recommend you look into it and.
Thank you.
To that point, thank you.
Okay, yep.
Is that, I understand that, you know, initially, there were 600 Bird scooters and 600 Lime scooters deployed in Columbus, and those, as Member Crowell was saying, that Columbus was receiving a dollar per scooter per day, and so, yeah, those numbers become very large, you know, as an impact fee for using the public right-of-way. You know, there are things that we can do, we could, as we move forward, is this, some of this revenue could be looking at maybe some concrete parking pads that could go somewhere, you know, to accommodate some of these, so that we have as kind of corrals for having these scooters as opposed to just seeing them, you know, deployed anywhere.
Okay. Councilmember Katsas.
The business model on this, on these systems, at the very least, they're multimillion-dollar companies, some of them have IPO stocks. I mean, I don't, this isn't something that we're going to inhibit any of these companies with these types of fees, and it's not something that, locally, that someone could just kind of pick up and do.
All right. Thanks for the comments and questions tonight.
Oh, I'm sorry, we do have.
That's been read for the first time, and yes.
Yes.
I'm setting the timer.
24 Morris Avenue. Again, I think this is good stuff. The one thing I want to caution is to make sure the fees aren't too high, because then you might inhibit anybody from coming in, even the big companies, because we're a small city, even with the student body, we could have fees that are too high for them to even decide not to come here. So they just pulled out, one of the companies pulled out of Raleigh, North Carolina, because they started charging, I think it was $3 a day per scooter, which is pretty high, but that does add up quickly, and they said, "We're not making money doing this." They just left. So if our fees are too high, nobody will come. So just want to check, make a check and balance on that, make sure we're not going too high. We don't want to, like Member McGee said, we don't want to discourage this, we want to encourage it, but we want to do it right. So just keep that in mind. It sounds like balanced fees is what was being considered, but just keep that in mind when you're looking at this, I think is the key. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. All right, we'll move on to announcements and other business. We have three items tonight, one of which is listed on the agenda. Okay. We have a motion to accept the auditor's March 2019 financial reports.
So moved.
Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign. They're approved. We now have a new policy that I believe has been recommended by the auditor for approving review of credit cards, a second system, a second set of eyes, just to checks and balances for review of credit cards. And so on a monthly basis, you'll be seeing council members making a motion because they have received a copy of those, just like they do the financial statements. They review those statements, and then I sign off vouching that we've received them. So that's the first time that this is occurring. So I would entertain a motion for acceptance of the credit card report from March 2019. So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approving those, that credit card statement the council members have received and reviewed. All those in favor signify by saying, oh, yes, I need Auditor Heck to make one comment before we make the motion, before we take the vote.
I just want to make it clear that this isn't something that my office came up with. This was legislation passed last August. The effective date for our credit card policy was February 2nd, the council has already approved, and this is required by the legislation, by the state legislation.
Thanks. Yep, all right. So now, with that additional information, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That motion passes. Thank you. Councilmember Crowell, I believe, has some appointments to make.
Yes, I'd like a motion to appoint two individuals to the Community Relations Commission for three-year terms. Ms. Vanessa Morgan-Nay is the coordinator for Multicultural Advising and African-American Student Success in Ohio University's Office for Multicultural Student Access and Retention. She works on creating academic enrichment programs for African-American students. She's a graduate from Ohio University, where she earned her master's in international development and in modern languages, in French. She did her undergraduate studies in her home country of Ghana, where she also studied French. She has taught elementary French for three years at Ohio University, has also served as the treasurer for the African Student Union. She has always been passionate about teaching and working with students, and she balances her life between her family and serving others in the community. And the second individual is Mr. Thomas Raimondi. He's originally from Orange County, California. He lives full-time in Athens and works for Ohio University and has since 2012. He is currently the graduate program manager for the Department of Social and Public Health in the College of Health Sciences and Professions. He's also a doctoral student in the College of Education. He is a member of the Athens Ohio Marathon Planning Committee and is a regional volunteer for his fraternity.
So we have a motion for appointing them to the commission.
Second.
And a second. Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. They've been appointed to work with the Community Relations Commission and thank them in advance for their volunteer service. Next week, a few other announcements, and I know Councilmember Fall has an announcement too. Why don't we go with yours?
I just wanted to remind people of the city of Athens to welcome, we are a welcoming, tolerant, inclusive city. We have passed numerous ordinances and resolutions and city mottos about it, and so when certain people who are in Washington, DC, that they'll threaten to send immigrants or asylum seekers to cities as a, as a way of punishing them, and I just want to say, we are a welcoming city, and we welcome people, doesn't matter. It would not be a punishment to have people such as the immigrants that are coming in come to our city. Thank you.
Thanks. Two other items, just housekeeping, that we will be having a committee meeting next week, so that if people could please let Clerk of Council Debbie Walker know if your committee intends to meet, that will be helpful. And then also, I think we have two dates coming up with the city, one, the citywide cleanup, and I know that starts next week, and we will be in committee, so I'm announcing tonight that there is the citywide cleanup, which means you've got a week to be able to set out trash, no construction materials, and there's a listing on our website.
Or tires or liquids.
Or tires, or what?
Or liquids.
Or liquids, so no liquids or tires, construction materials, but other than that, you can set out additional bags of trash. If you've got large items, then you need to arrange for special pickup. And then the other thing, oh, yes, you've got.
The service garage, again, this year will also have a dumpster down there. You need to bring proof of residency or your driver's license, and I believe, and I will get back to you, we'll have it on the website, I'm sure, but I believe that's from 7:30 in the morning to 7:00 in the evening, that that will be, people will be able to use that dumpster to discard their waste.
And then the other thing is coming up in May, the hazardous waste, we'll do additional announcements about that, but that's May 18th from 9:00 to 1:00. That's going to be at the Convocation Center. Yes, Councilmember Katsas.
And this is just a quick question. I heard that there had been talk that there might be a special meeting of council on the 22nd. Is that no longer the case?
There may be, so we ought to announce that in case that there is needing to be a special session, yes, so. And we'll also post that to the press and public well in advance. Councilmember Grace.
Just to confirm, yeah, these, the dumpsters are 7:30 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, so it starts the 22nd.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Thanks.
Double-check the post while people are thinking about it.
Okay. And we always have at the end of the meeting an opportunity, oh, wait, yes.
I just had a question for those students who will be leaving town, if they have electronic equipment and stuff that they would be wanting to dispose of. My understanding is that would be usually taken in through the hazardous waste gathering, but so there's nothing that would be prepared for May, so, prior to May, so that these students could actually get rid of those without affecting the environment, I take it. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
That's correct.
Okay.
I would encourage them to take it, possibly take it down to the Maker Space on Union Avenue, because I know they repair electronic devices. I'm sure that they would not mind having electronics, as long as they are repairable, but just trash.
All right. We, at the end of the meeting, have an opportunity for citizens to speak, and this would be on legislative items and city services that were not on the agenda tonight. Is there anyone that's wishing to speak? Okay. Now, we'll have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. We're adjourned at 8:26 p.m. Thank you very much.